This time we bring the State Board of Education regular meeting to order on Monday, February 12, 2024, at 5:30 PM. Members present are David Brett, Kenny Jennifer and Susie. And this time we move on to a pledge of allegiance and prayer by Mr. Park.
Yeah. All right. Attention, salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your edge of protection over me and this community. I thank you for this school that we're so blessed to be a part of. I pray for all the sick and brokenhearted. We're productive and we'll work a meeting this evening in all these names in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
See you next time.
See ya.
This time we move on to the approval of the minutes from January 16, 2024 meeting.
Any changes?
Second.
Right, we'll say, okay.
We're gonna jump ahead if it's alright with the...
Don't want to go ahead with every person since they made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the minutes from January 16, 2024 meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to our presentation from a member of Kerry, John Patton CPA, for fiscal year 23 audit.
Courtney, are you there? Okay, we're the junior speaker. Okay, Ms. Courtney, you're on speaker.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all very much for having me today. I think Courtney over on with Patton CPAs, and I'll be presenting your 2022-2023 annual financial report. So I'm gonna briefly go over the report. I'm gonna hit on some highlights and the opinion letters. If there's anything at all that you'd like to ask questions about or stop and dive further, still happy to do that. I'll begin on page one, which is the independent auditor's report. Page one through three is the audit opinion. We're coming into a financial statement audit, and so this is the opinion we get based on that financial statement audit. So we have audited the combined fund type and account group financial statements of a particular school district as of the summer of the year and into June 30, 2023. This has been done on a regulatory basis. I'm sure you know that the regulatory basis is different than GAAP accounting. Essentially, it's a modified tax-based system of accounting that's prescribed by the State Department of Education. Most school districts in the state of Oklahoma report on the regulatory basis. On the regulatory basis, they issued a qualified opinion, which means except for the addition of the general fixed asset group, that we believe that your financial statements are stated fairly in all material respects. Continuing over on page two, it notes that these are management's financial statements. It is the responsibility of management for the preparation and the presentation of the financial statements. While we help prepare the financial statements, ultimately, day or year, management is also responsible for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal controls. So what that means is that ultimately, the internal controls of the district throughout the various areas are management's responsibility. The auditor's responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material of the statement, whether due to broader error and due to an auditor's opinion, and that's what we've done here. Over on page four, that'll continue to begin the financial statements. Page four is the combined statement of asset liabilities and fund balances at June 30, 2023. Essentially, what this does is it gives you a snapshot on June 30 of your assets and liabilities in the various funds. You've got your general fund, the special revenue fund, and these two of your special revenue fund include your building and your child nutrition fund combined together. The debt service is the sinking fund. The trust and agency is the activity fund along with the gift fund, and then you have your general long-term debt. Your assets are made up primarily or entirely of cash and investments, and so that is just cash and investments that are held at financial institutions. Then you've got your liabilities, and your liabilities are made up of outstanding warrants, which were warrants that were outstanding and had not cleared the bank at June 30. And then you have a capitalized lease obligations payable of $18,856.01. That is a new purchase that the district, or you all have voted on, and any of those that they're required to have a mutual writing case required, which means that you choose to approve or not approve them every year. Typically, once those are entered at due, they are continued throughout the life, and so they are shown as liabilities on the financial statement. Over on page five, this is the combined statement of revenues, collective expenditures, and fund balance for the year ended June 30, 2023. This kind of gives you a picture of the whole year. So it shows the different revenues collected throughout the year in local, intermediate, state, and federal non-revenue sources, the different expenditures paid and assumptions, whether that be insurance, support non-insurance in capital outlay, or debt service retirement, which again, for you all, that would be a payment of principal and interest on a new purchase. And then you've got your beginning of the year fund balance compared to your end of year fund balance. So your fund balances have very healthy, the general fund went from approximately 2.2 million to over 2.4 million, and the special revenue fund went from approximately 1.3 million to a little over 2 million. So the debt service fund stays very consistent. That is very sometimes depending on bond issues. I think you guys just have a little bit of money that's just sitting in your debt service fund. Over on page six, this is the budgeted to actual schedule. You've got your special revenue fund combined together on the right, your general fund on the left. It shows your original budget, which is the revenues and expenditures from the estimate needs. It is a zero balanced budget, which means that we show all of the expenditures to match all the revenues. Obviously, in real life, that's unrealistic, but it still gives you a picture there of your zero balanced budget and then compared to what you actually both received and expended. Then we begin the notes to the financial statement. Page seven, the first few pages are really definitions. They cover a little bit about the different kinds of policies, the governmental fund, and the different things that are included in the sources of revenue and expenditure and assumptions. I'm gonna skip all the way over to page 14. Page 14 is your general long-term debt. Your general long-term debt was made up solely at June 30, 2023 of lease commitment. It looks like you had a lease purchase for the acquisition of a copier, and at June 30, 2023, you had one payment. It's possible now that that's already been made, but as the financial statement date, you have both principal and interest statement there, and that's that $18,000 that we showed in the liability in your financial statements. You can also see the summary, the total lease payable, which means we have the retirement or the payment in the balance. Over on page 14, the employee retirement system. This is the Oklahoma State Retirement System. All the public schools in the state of Oklahoma were paid on this plan. The first paragraph is the description of their plan. Over on page 15, it has their basis of accounting and funding policy. Currently, they are underfunded because you are reporting on the regulatory basis of accounting. None of that underfunded liability is showing in your financial statement. And under annual pension cost, you'll note that your district's total contributions to each year retirement for 2023 was $1,117,126.16, and that was on approximately $6 million in payroll and 0.6 million. Then we go over to page 16, and then risk management, which tells us a little bit on insurance, and then the surety bond, the State Department of Education requires that certain conditions be bonded for certain amounts, and we just said that there so they will see that you have met those requirements. The combining financial statements are very similar to the statements we look at at the beginning on page 17 and 18. They just show your building fund and child nutrition fund individually, as opposed to combined together, so you can view those on that page. Page 19 is the combining statement of asset liabilities and fund balances for the fiduciary fund. Again, it's just your assets and liabilities in both the gift fund and the activity fund at June 30, 2023. Over on page 20, it gives you kind of a yearly summary of the gift fund. It had a little bit in interest and donation for revenue collections. We had an expenditure where a scholarship paid, and then our beginning of the year and end of the year fund balance for that particular fund. Over on supplemental, page 21 and 22, these are also the budgeted to actuals for your building fund and child nutrition fund separately. They show the original budget, the final budget, and then the actual received expenditures. Page 23 and 24 is your schedule of federal awards expended. This notes all of the federal programs that your district either received or expended money in, or likely both during fiscal year 23. So all of the federal programs are listed on the right-hand side of the pages. The federal programs that are denoted with asterisks are what are your major programs. What that means is because you spent over $750,000 of federal expenditures, if you look on page 24, you spent approximately $2.8 million in federal expenditures, you are considered a single audit. What that means is in addition to looking at all of your federal programs, revenue expenditures, we select major programs, and that is done based on a variety of different factors. Some of it's high-risk programs, some of it's newer programs, some of it is in a rotation. So we select major programs, and then we look at the compliance requirements, the uniform guidance, and we ensure that your expenditures in those programs met the very specific compliance requirements that they have. Each program has different requirements. Many of the requirements are the same, but each program has individual requirements that we test in that matter. And so those programs are denoted with an asterisk. And then any money that, or any, anything that started parentheses, that's money that was owed to the district. So if you have a balance at July 1, 2022, and parentheses, those are monies that were owed to the district at, at June 30, 2022, that we received during this fiscal year. And then you have all your receipts for all the money that we received. Any transfers, it didn't look like you guys have any, some programs will let you transfer in and out of those programs. And then the expenditures, anything that's coded to those particular programs. And then your balance at June 30, 2023 is money that was owed to the district then and was likely selected in early 2024. Anything that you have a balance on that is not in parentheses is money where we have received, money that's been, has not been coded yet out to a federal program. Over on page 26 and 27, this is your collectivity fund. It shows all of the subaccounts that were in your collectivity fund during the year, their balance at July 1, 2022, any money deposited, transferred, or spurt throughout the year, and then their ending balance at June 30, 2023. Then over on the page 27, your total ending balance of $508,551.90, and written balance that is a cash flow and balance that you had in the activity fund at June 30, 2023. Over on the reports required by government auditing standards, we have two reports in the back. The first report is on page 28 and 29. This is the independent auditor's report on internal control of our financial reporting. Essentially, what this report says is whenever we plan and perform the audit, we consider the internal controls of the district. So we do not issue an opinion over internal controls, but we do look at internal controls. We look at that whenever, before we ever commit for the estimate needs. We look at that based on previous year's audit. We look at that based on the communication of internal controls of your district, and that's within all of the different areas that we test, whether that be revenue testing, payroll testing, purchase orders, federal programs, activity fund, any of the different areas, we consider the internal controls. And if we found something while we were doing our testing that we felt like was a significant deficiency or a material weakness, we would note that for you in this letter. We did not find anything and did not note anything. The second letter is on page 30 through 32. It is the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program and internal controls and compliance required by the uniform guidance. This goes specifically with those federal programs that I noted as major that were noted on the federal schedule by the asterisk. It says that we have audited these particular programs, like compliance requirement for the U.S. Office of State of Budget, the compliance supplement, that could have a direct material effect on these major federal programs, and in our opinion, that you have complied in all material respects with the type of compliance requirement. It also goes on to note that if we found anything specifically within those major programs or the federal programs that we felt like were a significant deficiency or material, we would note that for you. Again, we did find anything and we did not note anything. Page 35 is our schedule of comments. I'm sure no of you used to find that it's blank. What this is, we use this page whenever we find things that maybe are not in the institution or material weaknesses, but are areas which can be approached upon. Because yours is blank, it doesn't mean we didn't compress any transaction or any testing that couldn't potentially be improved. It just means that we didn't find anything that happened pervasively or over and over again, and so that's why we don't have anything for you here. It also means that you guys do a really good job. Sure, you don't need me to tell you that, but your administration and all of the people that you have that work in the finance area, we really appreciate them, and that's all I've got. That's a lot. If I'm having any questions, I'm happy to guide you into anything that anybody may like.
Is it Kerry?
Courtney.
Courtney. Courtney, this is Black Warren, and I'm a board member. Okay, there's obviously a ton of information and not much time. I've just got some simple questions. I think you already answered one. As far as the internal controls, I know you don't audit those, but there were no, you didn't find any major deficiencies that you felt like need to be brought to our attention?
That is correct, and I don't know that I would say we don't audit those. We don't issue an opinion on those. There's no audit opinion like there is on your financial statements, but we certainly do look at the internal controls, and typically, if there is an issue in internal controls, in our testing, it will be revealed. And so we did not find anything more than...
Okay, and then my next question, and I'm not an accountant, and I briefly kind of, I glanced at this 15 minutes before this phone call. On your independent auditor's report, it says in our opinion, that, okay, this is under qualified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. It talks about in our opinion, except for the effects of the matter described in the basis for qualified opinion on regulatory basis. And I skipped to that, and it says, do not present fairly, and then I go down to the bottom, and it says presume to be material and pervasive. So I don't know what any of that means. I know...
Okay, sure. Well, let me try and explain that to you. It is a little bit complicated. So first of all, you know, the accounting standard is GAAP, it's a GAAP basis of accounting, but you do not report on the GAAP basis of accounting. And the reason that you don't report on the GAAP basis of accounting is because the Oklahoma State Department of Education has come in and said that unless you, your district would like to apply for a waiver, which is very uncommon, some of the larger districts do it, again, it's very uncommon, then your default basis is the regulatory basis. But our auditing standards require that we put in there that even though you didn't account on GAAP, if you had, we would have issued an adverse opinion. So that's what that paragraph means. I mean, I hate to say it doesn't mean anything, but it just means that if you were looking at this and you were considering that we accounted on GAAP, then it would have been an adverse opinion. We did, now, what the qualified opinion means is that one of the requirements in the regulatory basis that you all do report on that is required by the State Department of Education is the general fixed asset group. So what that means is that's fixed assets or capital assets. So that is whenever you keep track of, typically, we have a policy that's be over a certain amount, maybe $5,000, maybe $2,500, and you keep track of your fixed assets. You are not doing that. Now, to be fair, we audit probably 75 schools, and one of them are doing that, and that is, so it's very much the exception, not the rule. So typically, because it's not, you do have the manpower to vote to do it in an effective manner, so it is not being done, and that is what the, that's why there is that basis for qualification paragraph.
Okay, so it's basically because we're not following GAAP standards, and we're not following GAAP standards, basically because of size?
Well, that's not necessarily true. You're not following GAAP standards because, like I said, the State Department of Education defaults to the regulatory basis. So your district, you guys, would have to decide to report on GAAP, which is a whole different ballgame of reporting, right? That, there, you know, it, we would consider compensated absence is, we would consider fixed fact. I mean, we do do some technology centers that do report on GAAP, it's a much more complicated audit, and many times, it's just, I could, you know, do it, your department, we could explain it to you, but it may make less sense than this does. So it's not, it's not, you're not comparing yourself to anybody else that's on the GAAP. It just doesn't, it doesn't typically search the needs of a small school.
Okay, and then I guess my last question is, based on this report, is there anything you feel like this board needs to be concerned about? That's really my only question.
Now, that's your loaded question, isn't it? I mean, here's what I, I can't answer that. I think this is what I can tell you. I can tell you that we do a financial statement audit. So what that means is we're auditing the numbers in the financial statements. We do not do a broad audit.
Well, okay, and I guess I'm going, there's no material misstatements, I guess?
No, there's no material misstatements. We know we would have, we would have listed it. I believe that, yeah, your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. I don't see anything, and I think overall that your district did a great job, but certainly, I can't tell you that there's nothing that you should be concerned about because I don't, you know, we come in and audit based on samples and based on specific items, you know. There could always be something that, that doesn't show up within those testing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. I sure appreciate you and everyone at your district, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Counselors, I think it's, counsel, lawyers, they can answer your questions.
Any comments, questions?
No, I'm good.
Make a motion to accept.
Make a motion, accept, make a motion to accept the audit. I'll second your suggestion.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to accept the audit as presented. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Okay, this time we move on to approval of the encumbrances.
Okay. Go look at your encumbrances. We have on the first page, one of the first big ones is 326, and that is pipe for the fence of the grade school and the new bus loading zone. 327 through 329 is for 21st Century Conference, that national conference that they have to go to. 331 and 332 are for the Science of Reading Professional Development, and that's paid with our RSA funds, but that's another meeting that they have to go to. Go down, 341, that's Brady Industries again. We just, we're doing that monthly to kind of keep track of it better. That's the trash bag, paper towel, liners, and all of that. Next big one, 344, that is for the repair of the 14-passenger Rapp Bus. Insurance is paying $21,503 of that, so we have to pay a thousand.
And I think I asked this before, is it our fault, I guess, or not the other guy's fault?
Well, we know, because when they got there, we'd already moved the side of the roof, so they couldn't say exactly what lane we're in. And the only people that we had were people who were in the bus. So they didn't like, nobody to passerby's for a witness or anything, so our insurance guys did.
Did the other group deny, I guess?
Yeah.
Truck driver?
Walmart. We tried, but since there wasn't a police report that said it's fault, and our insurance guys said they wouldn't have paid it either. We're out of thousands. But everybody's okay, so really, honest with you, I wanted him to get out of the road. That's the last place he needed to be, because the middle of the road. That is that. The next page is for our new grade school custodian, just a payroll encumbrance. And the next one, building fund, PO 27, that's for, we're gonna add a little canopy over where that man trap, we need a little one over the front, so when they open the door, they're covered too. So that's what that is for Robert. Next one, 28, that's a big one. That's to stop construction for the grade school. 29 and 30 are for the manhole and the sewer pipe. And 31 is for the dirt. Next page, child nutrition, that is for our life insurance for one of our employees that resigned. We took pay the last month. And our next one is for our 80134. That is for officiating games, and that was for Coach Hollingshead, and since he's an employee, we have to pay it through payroll. We'll get reimbursed, but they couldn't pay it since he was our employee. The next one is for first-class teacher induction program. That's paid by the states. We're gonna reimburse, but that's for first-year teacher and their mentor. They both get paid a little bit, and that's the State Department of Education. And we will be reimbursed for that, and those are our encumbrances.
Make a motion to approve the encumbrances as presented.
I'll second the motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to approve the encumbrances as presented. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
This time we move on to other financial reports.
Okay, I told you guys it was coming, but it didn't finally got here. We went to the black down here, and we'll just start with that. As you can see, in January, we were $29,000 over what we did last year. That was for a payment to the city for our SRO of $32,000. So we would have scraped by for one more month if it hadn't been for that, but, so you can see, we're $335 total with our payroll, too, more than last year. So if you look at our payroll, we're $30,000 more than last year, so we're right on track to where we were, what we expected with our, with the pay raise, but we did finally reach that, so I've gotta figure out something to make it, not spend a bunch more money. This is our summary of accounts. You can see, we had a pretty good year in the general fund, a good month. We're at 3.829. That's from, we got our midterm adjustment, which was pretty healthy, and then we also get our property tax, you know, this month. So that's a good month. And then on the building fund, you see, we're at 2.18. That'll be important when we talk about how much we want to try and do on this for the safe room or not. So right now, we're at 2.18 in the building, so we're doing pretty healthy there as well. Child nutrition, still hanging strong, 164. So I think we're a pretty good check. So that is our other financial reports. Any questions?
Okay. This time we move on to public comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point in regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy BE-B dash R. No one present for that. Information items, A, superintendent's report.
Okay. January, you know, was school board appreciation month. It snowed in that thing, we didn't get our card and stuff, so let me sure to look these cards over, and this is what the kids did, kind of thank you guys for all you did, and we sure appreciate it. Hope you, if you get a chance, look through that. Tonight is our last regular season basketball game. We play Wilburton tonight. If the girls win, they will be the co-champs of the Black Diamond Conference, so we're excited for them. Playoffs begin Friday at home against Poto. We do well. I think after Poto, we'll be end up going to St. Louis. It starts Friday night. As you guys know, our grade school project's underway. We have a lot of dirt being moved, and so I think everyone's pretty excited to see things happening. We also, we rerouted the buses back to the, kind of toward the front, or we moved a portable building. I don't know if you've been down there, but you can see that fence they put up, really did a great job. I think that's gonna work well. We had a few things we tweaked, but I think it went pretty well last week with the changes in the pickup. And like I said, you know, bumper construction began, the dirt work and demolition making good progress. I drove by Friday evening, they're down there working, and, you know, typically, when you see heavy equipment, you, I think, oh, man, how much is that gonna cost me? So I'm gonna say thank you to Rick for, you know, incredible donation, and it's greatly appreciated. You know, and we see that all that equipment working, you know, it's costly, and I really appreciate it. And that is the superintendent.
This time we move on to action topics. Action topic A, consideration of approval of the fiscal year 23 audit. I already did that. Okay. Action topic B, consideration of revision of the 23-24 school year.
Okay, this is for the inclement weather we had, revise our calendar each time that happens. We took a snow day in the yellow in January. Look, there's January 16th and the 22nd, we took snow days. January 17th, we took a virtual day, and so what we've done is those, previously, April 12th and April 19th, we were gonna be out of school. Now, we will be in school those two days, and the other day with a virtual. We were out three days, two of them were snow days, one was a virtual. So we need to change our calendar to show those changes.
Make a motion to approve the 23-24 calendar as presented. Second?
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the 23-24 school calendar changes as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
This time we move on to action topic C, consideration of the school calendar for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, this calendar is very, very similar to the current calendar, except we are starting a week later, so the first day for students would be August 15th, and other than that, it's the same, but there may be some revisions. We still have our professional day, virtual day in there, and I think that may, may go away, so we can revise that. We have a plan for that, but right now, again, this is the same week later. on, there's competitions going on, if we're out of school, and I don't like that. We're, it'll be a little later, graduation 13th next year, we'll start a little bit later. And like I said, there may be a little bit, some change we have to do in the next month or two, depending on what happens, but we're, we're prepared for that, not a big deal. I would recommend we approve this calendar.
Make a motion, we approve the '24-25 school year calendar. Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David, to approve the school calendar for '24-25 school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. It's time we move on to action topic D, consideration of college remediation report and dropout report.
The first one is your college remediation report. And if you look, you can see, we were at 19.4%. That's our total percent. We have 12.9% in math and 6.5% in English. Last year, we were at 29.4%, so that's a really good change, and so we're making progress, and we are proud of our decrease in college remediation rates. It's kind of hard to find some good information in this last two or three years, I guess with COVID, but hopefully we're coming back with some more accurate information. That is the college remediation report. The next one is our dropout report. As you can see, we were at 3.8% for the high school and 2.9% for the district, and that's for one year, nine through 12, or, really, seven through 12. You can see they had, our middle schools in there too, but we don't have enough to have a number, I guess, and so it's basically seven through 12 when you look at the district total, 2.9%. Statewide average is 3.3% for both high school and the district, so we're a little above the state average at the high school, a little lower than the state average district-wide. And I've looked at all the different counties around, we're pretty close to all of them. For instance, McIntosh County is at 3.4, but this is all district, 3.4%. Pittsburgh, 3.9, Sequoia, 3.5, Muskogee's 2.3, LaFlore's 2.7, Latimer's 2.49. So, I mean, we're close to, and we're in there.
Do we know what the reasons are? I mean, obviously, you'd like for that to be zero, and that's probably not realistic.
Yeah, it's hard, a lot of them, we don't know what happened. You know, most of our dropouts are in the summertime, so they just don't show back up. We don't really know where they're at, and that's why it takes so long for all this data to come back, because if they don't enroll in state, every student's got a student testing number, and it's kind of like your social security number. Everybody's got their own number, and so it keeps track of where they go, but they may go to homeschool, and we don't know where they're going. If they just don't show up, we can't say, hey, this is where they went. When they withdraw, they have to tell us where they're going. But if they say, hey, I'm going to go to Tulsa, but say, okay, and they're gone, but they never enrolled in Tulsa, we don't know until they.
But they couldn't enroll in Tulsa without?
If they enroll in Tulsa, they will know, because they have to have that testing. Sometimes there's duplicates, but usually that's caught.
Okay.
It can happen.
Especially between the levels of the 12th grade, right? Mostly.
Mostly. If you look, I mean, by age, I'm there by age, there's five at 16 and about five at 18. It's, I think it's the ones that are about 18 and then.
I was going by the grade. Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the college remediation report and dropout.
Second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the college remediation report and dropout report. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett? Yes. David? Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of investment proposals.
Okay, this investment, we had it before at Farmer, it was at 5.1. This matured on February 27th, we received three quotes from the area banks, and the highest was Farmer State Bank again, at 5.2% for six months. So I recommend we accept this proposal at 5.2 for six months from Farmer State Bank.
Make a motion, we approve the investment proposal with Farmer State Bank, and now 500,000 for six months at 5.2%.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the investment proposal from Farmer State Bank, 5.2% CD. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of bids for Central Heat and Air Unit of Superintendent's Office.
Well, we know this one went out, we put the, we split unit in there, but now that one over here has gone out, and it's got four offices, so we can't, we can't do that, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to do one. I believe it was 15 years old, and that's a problem, you know, a lot of our units are pretty old. Anyway, we got two bids for this. First bid from Webster's for 12,500. The other bid was from Satterfield Refrigeration, 12,890, so I would, I think we need to accept our lowest bid from Webster's at 12,500.
I make a motion that we accept the bid for Central Heat and Air Unit for the Superintendent's Office of Webster's, bid for 12,500.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to accept the bid from Webster's Heat and Air for the Central Heat and Air Unit of Superintendent's Office for 12,500. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration of recommended rebids for the construction of the elementary classroom.
Okay, we received bids on February 9th for the rebid of bid packages 3A concrete, 4A masonry, 5A structural steel, 7A expensive range screen panels, 8A storefront glass and glazing. If you look at this, the two additional classrooms and safe rooms would add 664,307 for a total construction cost, and we approved last month, we approved quite a bit, for a total construction cost of $3,907,620. So after we include, we're going to include our civil engineering architect fees, the total's going to be about 4.2 million. What that would take from our building fund would be about 1.5 million. So even with, you know, we saw right now, we're at 2.18, so 1.5 would bring us down to about 680,000. So I think that's a pretty worthwhile investment.
Do you have any concerns with the, with the building fund?
No, I don't. I don't, because, I mean, we, you know, it took a long time before we got above a million, and we still have another Red Bud payment that we shouldn't yet be about the same as the previous one, so I feel pretty good about it.
Is there any contingency money in this, or is that?
Yeah, I believe there's at least 150,000, 150 for sure, we have some. And we, right, if we don't use it, it comes back to us.
Yeah.
That is right. And so that, we had that money in the initial, and this second round, we don't have any, but we thought that the initial 150,000 would be sufficient to handle whatever might come up that Mr. Kettles could look at and approve.
And that gives us about 500,000, you know, building fund, with the Red Bud and?
Well, if we get a Red Bud of another 200, honestly, it'd be about, right now, we'd be, if we went, spent our 1.5, we didn't have any, we used our contingency up, we'd be at 680,000 at the end of the year. Or close, there's a few things we've got out there. We've got those, the manhole and the sewer pipe, but I think we'd be easily 600,000. Plus, in June, we should get our other Red Bud payment, which, whether we get it or not, it should be about 200,000. I mean, I can see it being at 800,000 at the end of the year. So, I mean, there's, that comes, you know, we talked to John a little bit about maybe enclosing that fourth one, if it comes true.
Yeah.
See how this goes, make sure everything's where we need to be, but I think it's up to consider.
How much did the concrete go up since the low bid, or didn't?
100 and?
Top number. That is the number, the difference?
Yeah, and that's from our initial one.
So we're at big time.
I think it's a worthwhile investment.
So what are we approving here?
Basically, we're approving that we're going to, this right here is, we're going to do the 3.2, we already approved, and this is going to add 606,400.
606.
606,400 for a total construction cost of $3,907.
Is it 904?
94, 620, yeah. I had it written down.
So the 4.2 total cost?
That includes our architect and our civil engineer, which is, it's a separate, they're based off a percentage of what we pay.
And this is adding the two separate rooms and the safe?
As a safe, correct.
As a safe.
And the 1.5 is adding the construction cost total, you know, what we pay him as well as our civil engineering and architect. That's the 1.5.
One B is the corridor, or what's one B?
One B is the safe.
Safe.
Corridor was too bad.
Too bad, okay.
And that's not on.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the total construction cost to be 3904620.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to approve the bid for the construction of the elementary classroom addition for 3.904620.
We're also approving the bids, right?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay. Action topic H, consideration to assign the approved bids to stop construction to our previously approved construction management contract.
So basically, last time, this sends all the, stop construction, so I would recommend we assign these bids.
Do we don't have any other choices?
We made that choice earlier.
It's too late now, isn't it?
Too late.
Sorry.
So I'll make a, I'll run a little more, make a motion, we send approved bids to stop construction under a previously approved construction management contract.
Second. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny, to approve signing the approved bids to stop construction under our previously approved construction management contract. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to executive session. A, proposed executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to 25 Oklahoma Statute 307, be one of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of continued employment of administrative personnel for the '24-25 school year. Tony Gilmore, federal programs director, assistant superintendent. Eric Stout, high school principal. Matt Jones, middle school principal. And Melanie Garman, grade school principal. Number two, discussion of retirement of Beverly Robinson, high school math teacher effective June 1st, 2024. Number three, discussion of resignation of Kate Sherwood, head football coach, teacher effective last day of the '23-24 school year. Number four, discussion of resignation of Dennis Craig, computer technician, effective January 26th, 2024. Number five, discussion of transferring Dennis Wright to the position of computer technician for the remainder of the '23-24 school year. Number six, discussion of transferring Travis Hatfield to the position of maintenance for the remainder of the '23-24 school year. Number seven, discussion to employ grade school child nutrition cafeteria employee for the remainder of the '23-24 school year. And number eight, discussion to employ head football coach, teacher for the '24-25 school year.
Make a motion, we approve the session.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, at 6:13 PM, to convene an executive session. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. 47 PM. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, at 6:40 PM, to, um, returning to the open session. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were David Huggins, Brett Norm, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White, superintendent. Tony Kettles was also present. No motions or votes were taken.
So I'll make a motion for continued employment of administrative personnel for the '24-25 school year. Tony Gilmore, federal programs director, assistant superintendent. Eric Stout, high school principal. Matt Jones, middle school principal. Melanie Garman, grade school principal. Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David, to approve the employment of administrative personnel for the '24-25 school year. Tony Gilmore, federal programs director, assistant superintendent. Eric Stout, high school principal. Matt Jones, middle school principal. Melanie Garman, grade school principal. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to approve the retirement of Beverly Robinson, high school math teacher effective June 1st, 2024. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to accept the retirement of Beverly Robinson, high school math teacher effective June 1st, 2024. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we accept the resignation of Kate Sherwood, high school football coach, teacher, effective last day of the '23-24 school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the resignation of Kate Sherwood, head school, head football coach, teacher, effective last day of the '23-24 school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Dennis Craig, computer technician, effective January 26th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to accept the resignation of Dennis Craig, computer technician, effective January 26th, 2024. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to transfer Dennis Wright to the position of computer technician for the remainder of the '23-24 school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve transferring Dennis Wright to the position of computer technician for the remainder of the '23-24 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion that we transfer Travis Hatfield to the position of maintenance for the remainder of the '23-24 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett, to approve transferring Travis Hatfield to the position of maintenance for the remainder of the '23-24 school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we approve the deployment of Heather Chapman as grade school child nutrition cafeteria employee for the remainder of the '23-23-24 school year. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to approve employing Heather Chapman, grade school child nutrition cafeteria employee for the remainder of the '23-24 school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we table the hiring of a head football coach, teacher, for the '24-25 school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to table the head coach, head football coach and teacher for the '24-25 school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Any new business?
No new business. Can I apply adjourn?
I'll second.
Hey.
Kenny?
That's my favorite one.
6:43. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to adjourn at 6:43 PM. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Next regular meeting, March 11th, 2024.